All right, so we move to the consent agenda. This is approved in a single motion of no discussion. We have approval of minutes from July 11, 2023. We have a city council meeting motion. No, no, not done. Approval of unvoiced register date ending July 25, 2023. Approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending July 25, 2023.
No motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, no objections? Okay, so we move to the public hearing now. We have the first one. Resolution 2023-88B approving second reading and public hearing of amendment to the City of Antwerp Code of Ordinance, Chapter 51.004, Service Pipe specification. Can I have a motion?
Motion, yeah.
Second.
Another motion to start the public hearing?
Motion, second.
Page 26. Do you guys want to discuss it first?
We hear from the public.
Yeah.
We hear from the public.
The Lavi? You want to speak on this one?
She wants to speak on it.
She doesn't want to speak on this one.
Could I speak on the three altogether?
One at a time, sorry.
For the copper thing, I want to do some research on mine. Even something that you would be okay with. The copper is much better than the plastic. See, the copper lasts 20 years longer than the plastic. It doesn't make sense to put plastic 20 years, so you have to come again, because you're responsible for the A-line. And remove it, put some other line, because you'll longer and cost you a lot of money. As I heard from the last meeting, it costs $200 extra for the copper line. I, along with many people, would like to have a copper for $200. You can pay $200 extra and have your copper line just to make sure it lasts a long time. So if you approve this, maybe you take a stipulation that whoever wants copper, they could pay the extra money you're saving and have a copper line. This will be a middle-grounded reassessment of the plastic. But if it doesn't last it, thank you.
Thank you. That's all for public comments?
Can I get a motion to end?
Motion, second.
Page 28. Any discussion or discussing or voting?
Voting.
Voting?
Voting.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmieri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Raffai?
No.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-88B approved.
All right, next one is...
Actually, I take that back. You have to vote as well. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-88B approved.
All right, the next one is Resolution 2023-102A approving first reading and setting the date for the public hearing and second reading of amendment to Antwerp Dangerous or Abandoned Building Ordinance, Title 11, Chapter 92, Section 90.001-90. Motion?
I'll make the motion. All second.
So, motion.
Then?
Then, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Mr. Mayor?
I need a motion and a second to start public hearing.
No hearing.
Oh.
This is first reading.
Sorry.
Okay. Got a lot going on.
A lot.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a quick overview. As we know, this is just the first reading, so we'll have the public hearing, or yeah, the public hearing at the next meeting where we can get into detail on it. But essentially, we have problems with abandoned, derelict, and dangerous houses in the city, as we all know. I mean, we all know where they're at, around town. And we do already have an ordinance on the books that, which is this chapter, but we're cleaning it up and fixing it and trying to make it a little bit more manageable for us to use it. One of the things we want to do is finally actually create a review board for just this purpose. And it's all contained here in the ordinance. Basically, a measure to try and address some of our problems.
Motion closed.
We got motion. We are placed on the public hearing, the new business, which is fine. They all are the same, they all be voted the same way. So these two next resolutions are not public hearings, we just pass the resolutions. So is there a discussion? No, just, are you ready to vote?
This is the first reading, so we can just discuss about it.
Well, the next meeting, we'll have the public hearing.
And discussion, right?
People time digging.
Okay.
Good.
Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmieri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Raffai?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-102A approved.
All right, the next one is Resolution 2023-103A. Approving first reading and setting the date for the public hearing and second reading of amendment to Antwerp Parking Regulations Ordinance, Title 10, Chapter 72, Section 72.005-72.999. Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor? So this is not only a revamp to some things we need cleaned up, but it also introduces a disability parking exclusive to the person who requests it. I may have butchered how I described that a little bit, but we've had a lot of complaints over the years about people spending money to have the privilege of having a handicap spot in front of their home. And then basically, because it's a public street, anyone with a handicap can park there. This basically will create a carve-out specifically for that. It will not be an actual handicap sign, but it'll be a special sign that is essentially permit parking only, but only available to our handicap residents. So that the spot will be exclusive for them. It has been vetted by our attorneys. I did see a lot of social media chatter on this. However, with that said, we intend to continue to research it. As we get feedback over the next few weeks, we anticipate even potentially bringing back some more changes to this honorable body at public hearing time, if need be.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Chowdhury.
I'm a little bit optimistic or confused, perhaps, that you're going to specialize in a specialized sign for specific handicap. How will the other cities people coming in and they're going to recognize that this is a special handicap, only designed to the residents, only specifically?
The plan is that it's not going to be an actual handicap sign. It's going to be something different, a variation on that, and likely, say, permit parking only.
And as it's drafted right now, what you've seen, it's going to look completely different the next time that it's in front of the public. Probably, we're working out the specifications, the language, so that we don't exclude, as you brought up, Councilman, anyone coming in. That's what we're fixing. And we have some issues with regard to enforcement we're looking at too. So once it's been a little more better about it.
I got a question now. So for someone to get this permit for handicap, what's a process I'm going to take? I know someone told me that you have to do it for a minimum of a month.
So our intention is to try and run it very similar to how we do the regular handicap signs right now in front of homes. Just a yearly upkeep fee, an initial installation. Obviously, they would have to be handicapped and prove that, but we're trying to keep it pretty seamless and painless. We'll have to develop some sort of sticker probably for the cars so that we can identify which car is supposed to be with that spot. But there's some logistics we got to work out, but we're hoping to make it as painless as possible.
I have a question there. So does he need a sign for a specific car and vehicle? So if somebody has also next to him a handicap sign, he cannot park there?
Our intention is to make it exclusively for the resident who needs it, not outsiders. Hence, it's not actually going to be a handicap sign. It's going to be a permit, basically a permit.
I don't understand what to say to you, but one thing, I'm doing from my experience, we face those things. People have a handicap sign, so he not park a handicap car there, he park on the side. He save this part for his other car. When other car coming, so he move this car to there and park over there. See, the other car has to, you have to save both way.
But we certainly can look at potentially assigning a sticker to a specific car too, so that it can't be interchangeable. That is definitely an option.
That's a good idea. What Councilman Musa say that I have a handicap and my brother doesn't have a handicap. So I'm going to do, I'm going to park my car in a handicap sign, I'm going to park somewhere else. And still my brother comes home from work, and then we switch. But I don't, nobody going to park in my handicap.
It's him and... And then it's coming.
That's what we've, that's why I'm talking about in terms of enforcement. People within the city have raised this issue because they've experienced it in other cities. And we're trying to examine the language, but more practically, address that concern exactly. How do we make this work for the people it's supposed to work for? As it's drafted, it's not ready yet.
Do you have any limitation for the street? I think there's by most, I don't know if people watching me or not. If you're campaigning, then you cannot park your car there. So many handicap sign, you cannot park any regular car. If guest coming or anybody coming, pull other turn, nothing else there. I don't disrespect anybody else, but I need to make a space for some other also. If you just put all the handicap sign, so you cannot park any other car there.
Well, we have a number of handicap signs throughout the community now that people pay for. I mean, we have only so many handicap residents. I mean, one of the requirements we're doing for this is you have to be handicapped and you have to trust that proof. Potentially, maybe we can, you know, look at, to see what we can do to address your concerns. But I mean, at the end of the day, we're doing our best to try and present something to this honorable body that will address some of the longstanding concerns here. But I don't think we can ever make it perfect. You know, everything's going to have a little bit of sway in it. Somebody will figure out how to game the system, just some area.
Mr. Mayor, I think this is why this is happening, because this is from the city side too. So a lot of people pay for their handicap parking spot. And they probably would have moved out of the street, but again, never revisit. The sign is still hanging there. That's why too many handicap parking sign all over. So we need to revisit and make sure they are valid. They are valid to their payday, and I think like their bills to the city. And that's a core instrument to go there and enforce the code, make sure.
Yeah, Councilman, I'm not going to say that there isn't potentially, you know, a few mistakes or something that have been missed. But there's yearly renewal fees with this, so if someone doesn't pay it, we go yank them.
But the sign problem is still there, that's what I'm saying. Do you need that?
No, we pulled aside completely. But I mean, there might be some exceptions to that. And mind you, we have found them out there where residents have took it upon themselves to put them up too. That wasn't even us. So we've identified a couple of those over the years, so.
Last thing, is there another fee for this too, or it would just go to the handicap?
The plan would be an annual fee with this, just the same as the handicap is currently.
So why are we doing the fees now? We have the same concept.
Well, we...
One's going to be obsolete.
Yeah, I mean, the original handicap program will probably obsolete at this point completely, I would think. I mean, I suppose we could still do a regular handicap if someone wanted it, but I would think most of our handicap residents probably will shift to this because it exclusifies their car. But the intention wasn't to run two, but I mean, that is a good point too.
If you don't mind, what's the fee I get?
Whatever currently is in the fee schedule, I don't know it off the top of my head, Councilman. I can certainly look it up for you. But council sets, adopts and sets it annually. Actually, Chief, do you know what it is?
Yeah, I believe it's $80 currently for the installation, and that's what DPS's costs are to purchase the sign, the installation, everything. And then it's $20 annually for the maintenance through our records clerk to send out the notices and process those requirements, so.
So that's $100 bucks right now, for just regular handicap. Now we're adding another fee, so you can have a sticker says, well, you're the only one.
No, 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 it's not going to be an addition, it's going to be either or. So our hope is the original just handicap sign program goes away and is just replaced with this. So and then you guys can also, you know, set whatever fees you want. You know, when we down the budget every year, that's in there of one of the fees you can adjust if you feel it more appropriate to be lower or more.
No, I think what it is, it's really, I just don't want to charge them another fee.
No, yeah, that's not our intention. We're just trying to fix it for the residents and address some of their longstanding concerns.
So the first step in this is to bring a form from the doctor that the person is disabled?
They would just have to present their existing handicap placard that they already have for their vehicle. So I mean, we're not going to, you know, make someone give us a doctor's note, but if you have a handicap placard, we're good to go.
Because they come and ask for a form to prove that they are permanently disabled?
That's probably for them to submit to the state of Michigan to get the placard in the first place. We just want to see the placard that you're actually legitimately needing, is all.
Send doctor to accept, doctor.
Yeah.
We are doing a handicap sign. People who reserve parking in the chairs and obviously all of that, legally, they can do so?
You can't reserve parking with a chair. In fact, if we see them, DPS sees them, we grab, that's what I've had in the streets. It's against residents.
If they see the, if the people in the fight for those things, if people say a chair there, they cannot park there, they can call cops?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't suggest they go and yank the chair that belongs to their neighbor and, you know, get in a fight, but you know, if it's during normal business hours, DPS, or you know, DPW DPS is more than happy to go over there with the pickup, grab it and take it. So if they complain, we could probably issue them a citation for doing it.
Or also complete the court enforcement.
Yep, absolutely.
Because it's considered like crash.
Yeah.
Councilman, to redirect your question, the clerk just looked it up, and it's now currently $100 for that installation and a $25 annually. We raised it in the last July 1 fee schedule, so just so you know.
I was hoping that they have no extra fee.
Yeah, no, no, it would be part of that.
Help?
Yes.
Councilman Raffai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahud?
Yes.
Councilman Alsmieri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-103A approved.
Thank you. Now we move to the new business, and we have the first one, Resolution 2023. 2023, that...
Why you look at me? Because you're...
You were supposed to, it's your job.
Yes, and I didn't catch it as well.
It is the job of three people, and I knew all by myself. You are correct.
20 resolutions, I can't, I'm a little slack.
All right, so 2023-104, Resolution to approve the contract extension of the 2019-2020. Is that 20? Is that a...
Oh, yeah, no, that, that's correct.
That's correct. Road surface resurfacing program for the 2023-2024 road resurfacing program. I'll make the motion? Second. All right, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. John, answer.
A big wait?
Yeah, I went through this whole resolution, the concept of these streets that needs to be repaired or resurfaced again. So I know some of them are because we had the service pipes on the streets. You know, I don't know how you get to choose the streets, you know, which one we should work on first, do the service piping and all that stuff. But sadly, there are streets out there that are really bad. Service needs to be done. And now we're kind of doing all the streets that are fine. We did the service piping, it's fine. But now we're trying to, you know, we do the paving. I grew up, someone in the streets was Councilman Sowey. And like, I'm going to give you an example, like Klinger. You know, service pipe was repaired, and I'm happy that it was done. But it was repaired on the sides where when you drive, it's fine. So why are we doing that where we have old streets? And I'm going to give you an example like Fleming. Fleming from the beginning of Fleming always to the end, really bad. So why not choose for streets that really need it the most, start by service lines and then repave again?
Yeah, so Fleming from Kniff to Casimir is on the line. That's our first, that's our first road. Let me...
One second. That is from Kniff to Casimir, but the entire street. So I'm going to just do half, where now we're placing on one side of the streets, residents, and not the whole. So why not continue the entire, the only service line, correct? They all need to be changed. So why not do the entire street once, so we can repair and repave the whole street at once? Why we're doing it slowly, slowly, instead of not...
So there's many ways we can approach this. We can start at one corner of the city.
One, one second. So, Councilman, we appreciate you absolutely bringing these concerns to us. I did have a brief moment to speak with you earlier in the day in regards to this, and I did take the opportunity to speak with John and briefly Tiffany.
I was just waiting for...
Yeah, yeah, well, I was prepping because we wanted to have an educated response for you, and we wanted to make sure we were prepared and had a resolution for you. So just kind of our defense on what we've picked here. Originally, these streets were selected based upon the Pacer study, which at least they were supposed to be, which means they were supposed to be from worst to best, obviously. Now, as you know, over the years, politics probably played a hand in that to some degree. I can't speak to all of the selection on these because some of these do predate us, at least me and John, and I can't speak to why our predecessors picked this route. But the one thing I can say is that as a rule, we are trying to replace the lead service lines and then systematically repave them as we go after that. And we were sort of following suit with these. With that said, you did bring it to our attention that Klinger, there are probably worse streets than Klinger out there. Some of these other ones on here are pretty bad and in need of it. But if we think that that one's good enough, we could potentially swap that out in the meantime. But over the next 10 years, our hope is that not only are all the lead service lines replaced in the city, but we've also come back through and resurfaced every street in the city at that point too. So at some point, we're going to have to circle back to Klinger anyway and do it as well. Now, I do want, I do 100% recognize your concern of, in the meantime, we'll take it off the list and shift to another one, which I can also tell you that we've had conversations today in regards to this. And that Fleming, the rest of Fleming, which you had flagged as, hey, why don't we just do this? We're going to look at trying to do those lead service lines, maybe even in the fall, moving forward, along with a couple other key streets that we've identified even today as pretty bad. And then moving into next spring, we'll try to systematically work from the worst streets first for lead service lines and then systematically pave after that. So we're certainly going to take some changes based upon your thoughts on this and reassess.
And then again now, I'm fine, like you said, this was previous in a particular time. But now, I'm going to go back again to the south end. To be no doubt again, where not even one street has been, any service piping been done on that area or repaved the streets. So not even one street is on the, on the smudge at all. Where I'm going to give you an example, Roosevelt is really bad. Where people come for the soccer games all around the cities, they look at that street, and it's really terrible. They just, why not fix that? Like, you know, like, I'm going to give you an example, now we're trying to fix the Ammon Street from Joseph Campo to Gallagher. Why not start from Gallagher to Kona where people go to the city hall? Where you have our fire department, our police department that cannot drive through and it's a presentation to the city. Now, if I come to the city, I'm a visitor, John, on the Ammon Street, if I come to the city hall, it's all beat up. So imagine what people feel about the city. And I do, if we're able to swipe Klinger and start on Roosevelt Street, where it's...
Well, we do have to do the service lines first, though.
That's what I'm saying, do the service lines. That's what I'm saying, well, how come that street, or that area from Holbrooke to Antwerp Drive, never been any attention to it? So I mean, it's been neglected all the whole time.
Some of our, some of our issues that we have is we put out for certain streets to have lead service lines replaced. Those gets, and we usually have a priority, we want it done a certain way. Getting those consent forms back are critical to getting us on the street. The contractor will not mobilize to that street without 90% of those consent forms signed. So honestly, when you're talking to your residents, those consent forms are huge for us to get back. They have multiple ways to get them back to us. The more we have on that street, and if I get a bunch in for Roosevelt, I can sit there and push that ahead of all these other ones that are, that we are current, that we are currently trying to track because, hey, we have over 90% of the residents signed, which means we can get into those houses to replace those service lines.
But we also, no one, no one ever went to that area. Have you guys did studies on those streets?
We have, everything's been, for, no, for that one, no. Because we've had, we've had certain ones that we have picked out, like maxed out through the Pacer study. So, you know, we're looking at the condition of the roads, trying to figure out things that way. And we are trying to go around the city. I know on the south side, we did do Oliver.
I'm glad Oliver's on there, even though we're fighting for, you know, please to cancel. Try to get one of those streets to be done.
We have made a change too. Everything's going to go out through the water go, the next cycle. We're going to send a consent form to every person in the water.
Yeah, we're going to blast the whole city with it.
We're going to blast the whole city. Because it's taken too long to get consent forms. And we're, basically, the consent forms are dictating what streets we do for lead service lines.
It's been a chance.
These consent forms, do you guys send them to the resident, or does it work?
We hand deliver them to the residents multiple times. So there's usually at least two regular notices, and then a final notice that we put out.
I'll request, next time, if you guys want to help, notice, you know, the local people understand. It's most of people.
We're also taking a new measure, Councilman, that previously, we didn't shut water off for people that didn't respond to us. But after the second or third notice this time, we're turning the water off to get their attention.
Can I ask, are the notices multilingual?
We have a notice, we have a blurb on the bottom, this, come to city hall.
We're really, we're really yamping it up.
Because of the different languages.
And everybody that comes to the window at the DPS office, we have them sign a form. Everybody that comes in for anything, doesn't matter, we're getting a signature. We're trying to get the signatures every way possible.
So all respect and honor of the, start doing Roosevelt as soon as possible. It's really bad. I'm not, I continue to have the residents or visitors from the, obviously, come watch the game, and that street is not fair. So and then slowly, we move to other areas. My linger, if you drive through, I go, we have gas monster there. We could hold on until we, our whole streets are...
We're not going to do that.
And that's fine. Councilman, the city mayor also brought a couple other concerned streets to us as well this afternoon after you gentlemen looked at them. So we're analyzing a few others, but those have obviously made it on our list at this point, so.
To my dear Senator, Mr. Mayor, why we having a lot of complaint about the speeding issue in our city? So why on New Peak Road, why don't we doing the speed hub?
We are, that's the plan.
When we get the beat here, the street, make the speed hub.
That's the plan, Councilman. Go there.
Okay, another street, and I set open, it's very bad, second and Fleming.
The second half of Fleming, Councilman?
Yeah, set up. From Capriton all the way down to Knee.
We are 100% going to be reassessing which streets we move to next. And it'll, it'll recognize them as the worst.
We didn't need to make it the last, make it for this program now, where you can hear those speed. For ahead.
And I request, if we do one street, let's try to do the touch. And then just prove there. Because that makes, you know, residents like, well, how come they did my side and not my other side? Yeah, I'm telling you. So if we're able to...
More than one at a time.
It will be better.
Mr. Mayor?
I think if you're going to do the interior street from Kniff to Oliver, the coverage, it's going to ask the cost, and the budget will be adjusted right as well. I always emphasize about the reconstruction and resurfacing the roads and alleys, you know. That's one thing I was telling folks when I was running. I just tell, while you up here, the Knee from Kona to the Buffalo, they had done one side of it three weeks ago, and then never came back to do the other side, the south side. It's like, no work going on.
It's all logistics, it's logistics, construction logistics. So we have to sit there, once we place concrete, we have a cure time. So it's a seven to 28 day cure time. So we break cylinders in seven days, 14 days, 28 days. We have to make sure we got the correct strength on that concrete to sit there so we can actually start moving vehicles to pave, because now, in order to start paving that second half, which I did confirm while we were in this meeting, it sounds like one day that second half should, they should start placing concrete there. But, so it's all about... But, so, it's all about construction logistics, is what it is. It's, we understand that what it looks like, what it's, there's a method and madness behind it, so we've got to adhere to it.
It's a work in its time.
It's to make sure we have good...
Traffic to non-road, you know, that's the reputation, the up north are going there away. People are just whining and constantly, you guys been on this road?
Yeah, they don't see anything happen, so it's hard for them to understand the cure time.
All right, thank you.
Decoy construction workers.
So I don't know if it's possible, since we wait for those consent forms to come back, some people just ignore this. Maybe we can send somebody to lock doors?
We're doing that. We got our interns out there now. We'll not read this minute, but we're sending them out there.
Explain to the residents that this is important, we need it back.
No, we have bilingual kids that are working in City Hall, we're sending them out doing that as well.
I sent my guys out the other day, so, my department.
So that means Oliver, they all signed it. When we go some street, before we do the letter, let me work with you a part of the year, you know, let him know.
All right.
Just to clarify, we have made a change in the strategy, that before, when we were going to do the lead service lines, we will only go and send the consent forms to that area. Now, the change in strategy is to get the consent from the entire city, not wait for us to go to that area first and decide on that and then send the consent form. So if we have the consent from the entire city, it'll speed up the entire work and the planning of all the streets in one go.
Is it been drawn that by, how's it, how's it?
Well, multiple strategies. Sending the notices directly, and whenever somebody comes to the City Hall for any issues, have them sign the consent form at that stage. So we're applying multiple strategies to get these consent forms.
Plus, if we've identified a street that we would like to do because it's the core shape, then we're going to knock the doors, and then eventually, if no one responds, one signs it in, one signs it in, then we're going to shut the water off, get their attention.
So we're still waiting on about 30% time limit between Joseph Campo and Kona, and those are critical because of the road reconstruction for next year. I need to have service lines replaced before they rip up that road next year. So it is critical to try and get those, the rest of those consent forms.
Anyone's water we shut off, we're anticipating turning it right back kind of same day. It's more of a, we need your attention, I think, if you're not answering the door. And we're pretty sure people are going to write in at that point.
Well, if you want to help, I'm happy Oliver's on there.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was to me. All right?
All right, thank you. And since we are not getting much money from the state for the alleyways, I discussed with our chief financial officer in the last, if we can utilize $1 million for our general funds to do more alleys, and they said it's possible, we have enough. So I think that's something to show the residents that we care about, and not only doing stuff for us, you know, in the building or something like that. So I think it's possible, people wants to see some, something done for them, and since we have money sitting there, we can utilize it, and if we get more money from the state, that's fine, if not, I mean, it doesn't affect our property. So, thank you. Okay, can we vote now?
You tell me? Yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Wait, wait, we're recording by holding on, trying to...
What's that?
We're recording by holding on, measure?
Yes, we will hold on.
Yeah, this is just to prove in the contract, the streets on there, we can make a change.
Okay, yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-104 approved.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution 2023-105, Resolution approving Hamtramck general administrative policies.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, so, our last audit identified various policies that we were lacking, so we took it upon ourselves to clean those policies up and add them, and then added some more. So, basically, we're just trying to shore up our policy manual for all of City Hall. Up until this point, we've had policies, but they haven't really been consolidated in one place, and it actually was sort of trying to find some of the ones we had. So our hope is to take these seven policies and actually codify them into one concise manual, and then as we get more, add them to them, and of course, bring them before the honorable body. You see on here, there are various ones. There's ethics, ethics and conflict of interest, uniform grant guidance policy, purchase policy, purchase policy for federal grants, fixed asset policy, fund balance policy, and use of computer and internet policy. Most, they basically track with our actual ordinances in place on those, and then also federal law for, obviously, the federal grant policies and such.
Any discussion?
I...
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa, do you know what we're voting on?
Yes.
Is that yes to my question or yes to the vote?
No.
Okay, so for Resolution 23105?
That kind of came off bad.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023105 approved.
All right, thank you. And, all right, let's see, we still have 15 to go.
We're moving along now, Mayor.
Next one is Resolution 2023-106, approving city Hamtramck employee head.
I make a motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, Council, in our continued endeavors to straighten things out, the last time anyone did an employee manual, I think it was 2018, so we're a little overdue for updates. We subsequently sent it to our attorneys to vet it and change things around and try and clean it up, and we present it for you for your approval.
Let's go to the book.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023106 approved.
Okay, next one is, all right, let's see.
D.
Resolution 2023-107, approving purchase agreement and subsequent purchase of 3441 Everly.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, on this in particular resolution, as we wrote it out, we are hoping to purchase this home, which is situated directly behind City Hall, and turn it into additional parking for City Hall and surrounding. Couple things, I did hear that the price was a little high, a few people had said that. We did actually get an assessed value of what our assessors believed it would actually be worth. We are within those parameters. Obviously, yes, we are paying for a house ultimately to demolish it, but there's something to be said about the piece of property is frankly where we need it, you know. You know, we're, we don't have vacant property around City Hall that we can just, you know, contemporaneously right with our back parking lot that'll work. So, I mean, you know, property is worth what someone will pay for it. The city of Hamtramck needs it. We are always having problems with parking here. We are constantly hearing about it during the day, whether it's, you know, visitors for, to pay their water bill, or visit the courthouse, or, you picked your reason for coming, but people are always complaining and late because they can't find parking. Our residents around City Hall are constantly frustrated with us over this because visitors are taking their parking spots. I mean, we anticipate with purchase of this house, maybe getting upwards of 15 to 20 more spots with the addition of restructuring the alley and the existing parking lot we have. It's not just from here, but as a whole, we think we can get a heck of a lot more spots out of it. So we present it for you as, it's something to improve the parking.
Mr. Chair, if you refer to parking, the park outside, previously, parking used to be like an angola, it was like on the sides, so they kind of fixed it where it could be. How come we not do other side from Everly and Emin, so the same thing we did in front of City Hall?
I mean, we can look at that. It does, at the end of the day, diminish our park size a little bit, and it would certainly take away from the park. I mean, we are looking at doing just that in front of, potentially doing just that in front of veterans. So I mean, I wouldn't be totally opposed to it, but I mean, it would cost more park space, we would have to move the sidewalk back, we did it, but if that's what this honorable body wants, I mean, we can certainly entertain it.
I think there'll be a better option than buying a house for $120,000.
It's probably going to cost pretty comparable.
Demolish this house, you know, to me, it doesn't make sense. Do I want to spend $100,000, this is money for you, but I'm going to buy this house for $120,000. Demolish this entire house, I'm going to have two entire parking spaces. Where we're able to fix this park, this park on both sides, is going to look much better where now you can park all around the city, you have more spaces. I think, how much is it going to cost us? How much is it going to be that much than just buying a house for $120,000?
So, Councilman, in regards to that, I don't think we'll necessarily get a lot more spots out of that, because even in front of veterans, it afforded us a few more spots, but I actually believe we probably will get more spots from the purchase of the house, even that, even reangling those. Plus, please keep in mind, too, that now we have to redo all the curbs and all the sidewalks around the park as well. My guess, my educated guess, is it's probably going to be pretty comparable.
Yeah, Storm and Sewer got ours a change. You gain about four spots.
I mean, we could certainly look at that, Councilman, if that's your preference, but I do think it's going to be very similar, and plus, then we also lose the park space a little bit.
I wish you had to look into that before we purchase this house.
Well, I do caution you that, I mean, the house is for sale, people now know that we're interested in it. If we put this on hold, I mean, I can't guarantee that the seller doesn't resell the home and/or someone buys it in speculation of the city of Hamtramck eventually wanting it too. So, I mean, we'll do as Council wants, but I think we're at a kind of a crossroad here.
Who else?
Nope. I already researched it. All right, we did more...
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, no.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023107 approved.
All right, next one is, Resolution 2023-108, approval for defined benefit plan adoption of a new division in MERS for all newly hired non-union employees.
Mr. Chair? I make a motion?
I need a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as I stated earlier before we had the presentation, all four of these resolutions are companion resolutions to go with our presentation earlier to basically correct it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Our request, if we're able to postpone these until we, you give more info on these all plans here.
It's 2023-108? So how many of them, we have E, F, G, H, and H.
Actually, if we still do it, since we passed up the additions and additions, or we can just table them, we can table them if this is...
Well, I mean, they would individually have to table each one of them.
Let's start with that.
But they have to vote on the table. I mean, obviously, my recommendation is, we did the whole presentation today, my hope was that we pass these and move on, but obviously, if that's what Council would like.
Mr. Rafai, you want to have more details, more in-depth...
Well, this is the, everybody can speak on their self, this is the, you guys think that, you guys have enough presentation that you're finalized it? You can go ahead.
I do have, I do have our controller and our HR here, our contractor did leave, so I don't have her to answer questions again, but I mean, certainly, Councilman, if there's any more questions, we can bring them back up and we can do our best to answer them. The presentation did show the current plans in comparison to the new plan of exactly what we were trying to do. I mean, we can do our best to try and alleviate any concerns for now.
Me personally, I think it needs to be done outside to the Council, where we're able to get more info on this. And this is only me, you know, you have... We can do it until next meeting, maybe. You have four other council members that might just go for it today.
I was just trying to address your concerns, because you mentioned it.
Has your motion, so somebody has a second before we go through?
A second.
Yeah, only, yeah, only, nobody seconded it.
Yeah. So now that this is the most...
Now we're discussing it. Actually, I think we were discussing it without a second motion, but...
Okay, so, any, I feel like this, the city is trying to do an attractive system to retain the employees, and, you know, one day, if someone worked here for 20, 30, 40 years, they should deserve to have a pretty good retirement package, you know? We all, age is the number, but we're going to get that number.
Well, this plan also is benefiting the city as well, because we're moving the retirement age from 55 to 60. So at the end, we're saving money for the city.
And then we had this CFO, HR, and then this special lady from the MERS to give us the pretty good illustrations to educate us, you know, what this is going to do for... I was pretty okay with that because of the, we're making implementation, we're trying to keep our employees here, and they also get benefited at the end, but it's all up to the rest of the Council to move on or whatever.
Our staff put a lot of work into this one, for this honorable body.
I don't have no issues with it, I think it's more, I swear, I'm bothering the long term in this budget, you know, the budget is not looking great, we might lose Dirkerson East with the $1.3 million. So I'm just looking further within years, I think if we're able to get, have a meeting again, try to understand better, I don't think, you know, due respect, I don't think most of them actually feel comfortable avoiding, even Mr. Chowdhury, Councilman Chowdhury is. Me personally, I'm not. So, you know, I believe we'd be postponing to a different date, could vote on it, see if council members want to postpone, or they could vote on it tonight. Can you wait for, until next meeting?
I mean, we can, Councilman, I mean, obviously, it just delays, in our opinion, wrapping this up and moving forward. I mean, we want to close these plans and adopt one that's consistent across the board that we feel better fits the city. You know, I mean, it's our opinion that this plan is beneficial to the city. You know, the whole five years later of collecting your retirement, I mean, that's, that's a lot, you know, across the board for this.
If they just wait for two weeks, is it going to be big havoc?
I mean, it's, I mean, the world's not going to collapse, but I'm just saying that our preference is...
And we do have, you know, compliance issues, too. We are not operating for the terms that's set forth by MERS. We are not, and we are in compliance issues for the reasons that we stated in our situation. You know, it does need some repaving to make us be in compliance with the terms and conditions set forth by MERS.
I guess, I don't know what else we can present on the topic at this point. I mean, we'll, we'll try to address anything that you would like, but I don't know what else we can present to you. I mean, we had a contractor that we hired basically to help us with this, you know, our staff has researched it, we've met with MERS, we tried to answer the questions, I don't, I honestly don't know in another two weeks again on it.
Oh, Johnny just left, I was wondering, did he look at this?
Yeah, he didn't want none of it? No, no. He's probably just stepped out of his restroom.
So in case there is a problem, that, you know, experts find, and this, we always can come back and change it, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, you could. I mean, once we vote to close the plans, our intention are to close those plans and basically get rid of them so that no one goes into those anymore. We don't, the new one, I mean, we could not make some of the moves, but... We don't, uh, the new one, I mean, we could not make some of the moves, but, I mean, we want to shore it up. You know, we want to bring in the employees that, that aren't in it now to resolve our compliance issues with MERS. And, I mean, and we can delay it, but I don't know what else we can offer at the council on the topic.
Why do my table, I guess, make more detail?
We are, we are actually on the motion.
I do have a question though. What about new employees? If we get a new employee within this time, we're going to have to sign them up to the old plans.
If we, if anyone comes in the door, uh, at this point, we're going to have to stick them in another plan and then we're going to have to shift it again. So it adds more.
In an incorrect plan, essentially. Will be enrolled, is it going to plan that we know is incorrect?
Well, no, we're still talking about table. I can take that, I can take it back.
Well, somebody, you have, you would have to reverse your.
Yeah, I'll take.
Okay.
I might take that and let council vote.
A little bit of head, must change always change.
So I looked at the motion to table.
Let's vote on.
So it's still open for discussion if you want, or you wanted to vote on it?
Let's vote.
Yes, vote.
Uh, Councilman, Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Musa?
So I'm sorry, just voting on.
We're voting on the resolution. He, he motioned to lift the tabling.
Okay.
So we're voting on the resolution.
Resolution, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, Councilman Musa?
No.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman McHood?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Uh, no.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-108 not approved.
That was the table or the whole resolution, because I stepped out?
I took out one, too.
Okay.
So you got three, one, two yeses or?
Two yeses, three noes.
So Mayor can vote now?
No, it's not tied.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, next.
So does that make all the rest still active?
Well, I, I mean, they're active, but I mean, they're all.
There are serious issues with the compliance inconsistency. So this motion, this whole proposal will have to be brought again.
Because we're not.
We can't have this inconsistency and compliance issue. So you vote today, or you vote tomorrow, or next year, it is going to come back.
And this is coming from MERS. I mean, this is, you know, I have a school pension plan. We have.
We have to have.
We have to have the compliance.
There's, there's also some potential closed session discussions that this brings forward. If it doesn't happen. Liability.
What we were up against is the compliance mostly. I'm a compliance officer for my company.
We can't have employees, you know, some in a, in a company and then others that are not.
We haven't been compliant with the state or MERS for a while. It's like I heard, if we waited a week or two, it seemed like.
Councilman, my, my only concern is that we've brought it to the attention of council at this point to try and remedy what we believe is a problem. And, and now we've continued the problem and didn't resolve what we thought was going to fix the problem. We've brought it to the forefront to fix it.
So what we do, we, I mean, as the CFO said, that it will come back. So do we continue with the rest of them to vote, or we just?
Well, they're, all, all four of them are, are separate resolutions, but companion resolutions. So council could decide to table all three of them, disapprove all three of them, approve three of them, bring one back, reconsider the one that just went through. I mean, there's any myriad of options. At some point, uh, if, if they all are disapproved, I probably will try to get, I don't want to say an emergency, but I will ask that the mayor convene with the subcommittee to fairly quickly and hopefully bring them back pretty rapidly and and maybe go into closed session at some point and discuss potential liability issues with our city attorney. I hope that explains it.
All right, so I guess.
So who's going to make the decision?
Well, again, we're on the next, you, you just voted down 108, correct? Is it 108?
Yes.
You just, 108. So either it can be, I believe we can reconsider a motion?
Yeah.
We can reconsider a motion, or we can move forward denying the next three, or approve the next, I, I, it's on this honorable council.
Are you guys reconsidering what you want to do or?
I mean, you are in the motion. Anyone who changes mind, we can reconsider after this explanation. Because the next step is to bring it back to the next meeting. So like I said, I mean, in, in case it gets approved and we found, you know, asked some experts and test some problems for the city, we can bring it back and.
Mr. Mayor? How do you consider for this?
You will reconsider?
No.
Councilman Abumosa will reconsider.
Say his vote, so he make a motion or?
I mean, is there, this is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If there any issue come up there, we can bring it back to the city.
Yeah, that's why I was convening.
Uh, does he have a motion to reconsider?
Okay, who, you brought the motion to reconsider?
Yes.
I need a second, right?
Then he's, he needs a second.
All right, second.
So are you, can I ask a question? Is he reconsidering his vote?
Yes.
He is reconsidering his.
Well, he still, he needs a motion for somebody to approve him reconsidering the vote?
He is re, he is motioning to reconsider the vote.
The vote, so we have to vote it all over again? Okay.
I reconsidered the vote, the reason. So Mr. Mayor, explain it. Let me explain again. If any issue come up there, we can bring it back to the council.
Councilman Chowdhury, you starting it on that?
Yes.
Is everybody in approval?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little moved.
Do we just do roll again, or do some motion again to?
So now the, the one they just denied is back on the table?
Yes.
I'm taking, making.
108 is back on the table for reconsideration and for re-vote.
Yes, okay. Now, do we have to?
Do they have to motion again?
Bring a motion, bring it back? Leave it or just on now because they reconsider?
I think when they voted, they closed it.
And.
And then would be a motion to?
It's reopened.
Re-adact what opened it?
We're back on?
We're back on, 108 is on, it's, and so.
It's open now, and we got to vote again?
Yeah.
This resolution. Now you hear us again, that four of us, or three of us vote again, then this will pass or not, I see?
Exactly.
Okay.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Uh, no.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman McHood?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-108 approved.
All right, thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023-109, approving defined benefit plan amendment to MERS Division 01.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any other explanation that's different than the first?
Why did you combine all at once together?
Because they're different motions, you do different things, different plans. So.
There was a requirement of MERS that need, need to be approved at separate resolutions. Even though it's the same, overall same plan, but because they affect different divisions, so it has to have a separate resolution for each division. That's the reason.
Take your.
Which is four, we now. Up against the MERS. F, that's.
Uh, Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Musa?
No.
I mean, it's, they are linked to all of them.
They're all together, they're all on the MERS.
I mean, like four resolution are the same decision. I mean.
Do they come back to you?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman McHood?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Uh, no.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-109 approved.
All right, the next one. So I guess the next three, right?
Two more.
Two more. They are, you know, one, one, uh, package.
One package, yeah.
Yeah, one package. Just have a different resolution number. So Resolution 2023-110, approving defined benefit plan amendment to MERS Division 01.
Motion.
Second. All right, vote.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Elsmieri?
No.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman McHood?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-110 approved.
All right, and the last one is Resolution 2023-111, approving uniform transfer position in MERS plan.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman McHood?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Elsmieri?
No.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-111 approved.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Rafai, if, if you would like tomorrow morning to, to sit with us, uh, to try and go through this fine tooth comb, I, I know you still have reservations about it. I'm more than happy to try to carve out some time.
Thanks.
All right, so the next one is Resolution 2023-112, approving support for Warriors on Wheels and ARC Detroit to submit a grant application to the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have the chief here to talk about this.
May I, Mayor, Council? This, um, resolution originally came to you in 2021, 2021, to partner with Warrior on Wheels and ARC Detroit to do a grant application to assist with the City of Hampton's Police Department and training on the disabled community. For whatever reason, they were not able to proceed with their grant back in 2021. I meant there was a lot going on of COVID and things. So they came back to us again. They're going to submit a grant application and partner with the police department and give us training on working with the disabled community and interacting with them. So it's asking you to, this was part of their process for the grant was to approve this resolution.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman McHood?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-112 approved.
All right, next one. Fifteen more to go. Uh, Resolution 2023-113, resolution to approve the purchase of mini split cooling unit for the second floor council chamber.
I motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, honorable counsel, I have our DPS director here to defend this one. I'm sorry.
You represent this one.
It's hot in here.
End of presentation.
And then there was.
Any questions?
Why don't you give an overview?
I'll give an overview. Um, this is for basically a mini split, couple mini split units. So there'd be two, what they call heads, that would go in a strategic location within the room here. With one condenser unit, that would be on the roof. It'd actually take it through the third floor through a chase way and then stationed on the roof, which in this building is not the, you know, easiest task. I did happen to talk to some other contractors relating to mini splits. One, finding a contractor that could do the job, one has the units in stock and two that could do it in a timely manner is almost impossible. Two, we've used this contractor for, I think, going on 12 years now. So he's been bid out a few times on different projects earlier, was a low bidder in those projects. However, not only that, the owner was here writing up the estimates, taking down serial numbers, model numbers and whatnot. This is information that I've gathered from my department when I've talked to people that have been there longer than me. So he's been very thorough. He comes in when we need him. And I put this together. He's bid different projects in the city for mini splits before. So all the different offices I've been trying to get bids on to do this. These also act as a heat pump. So for some reason, we do lose our boiler. We have some right now in the assessing office that can be turned on to do heat. This would also be able to supplement heat. And it's very inexpensive heat. Basically runs on a 15 amp breaker, 220, 15 amp breaker. So they're very energy efficient. That's why using this compared to a furnace model. In this building, doing a furnace model, other than what the cord is done, is quite difficult, especially on the first floor.
Mr. Chair? Mr. John?
Yes.
Even though, you know, I kind of didn't measure it to Max. After the two customers we had was kind of high, and we had windows. So it was kind of requested we needed these. Looking at the prices on these units, my question is to you, you have a value here, it will cost $17,848, correct?
That's for this because it's the bigger tonnage. So it's a four-ton condenser with two, two-ton, two-ton head units with all the line sets together and then get it to the roof.
And those are just for the units, correct?
That's for the, no, that's to install it, all but the electrical. The electrical line, I didn't want them to quote because all they do is get electrical quotes and times about one and a half and let us know what we owe for. We have our own electrician that we bring in and do work here in the city quite a bit. So I'd have them run the electrical line to the unit.
Is, is labor included in this budget?
Yes.
An estimate value have, it's not included in that price. The following are excluded, prime time labor.
Premium type labor, so.
Premium time labor and actually nine voltage electrical line.
Right, that's the electrical line that I just mentioned. That would be done by our electrician. And the premium time labor is basically if we have them work off hours or weekend hours or there's something that they would come across that requires a special skill or set to the cord through a weak wheeling to like the roof or something wall or whatnot.
Now, what, what's going to be the final estimates?
It should, you mean, what, well, it's their price unless, like, to say we, they run into unforeseen circumstance, but that's going to be in anybody's contract. And this contractor's been pretty legit with us. He's worked here for 12 years plus. We haven't had any problems with him in the past. So he's a pretty reputable company. And he always answers the phone when I call. He actually had a call with 6:30 this morning. He answered the phone.
So are, are they looking at that, they, they actually going to work overtime? Are you, are you holding this in hand?
No, I'm going to tell them I don't want the premium time, get it done on regular time. Yeah, for sure.
He can tell that you say, send them stuff. He can tell that you say, that's a high price for a small room like this. Like, did you try other vendors or just?
Yeah, I own a lot of commercial buildings myself. And I use these units in a lot of my bars and my restaurants on a regular basis. And the, the prices that we've gotten are very consistent to what I, uh, it looks. I use multiple contractors in different areas because I have different businesses around the state. But the pricing seems to be right, right in line with.
So also, councilman, um, our DPS director has the benefit of being a building inspector as well. So he's, he's been around this pretty prevalent. Plus, this room isn't really that small, as, as we all know, sometimes it's standing room only. I mean, there's not a lot of people in the room right now. It's, it's hot in here. I mean, we've, we've been dining here for years for various times, so I believe.
A few weeks ago, it's really.
If I'm not mistaken, I think you did go with a larger unit to handle just that issue, so.
Well, they give us good reports. So this is going like with our, they service our boiler currently. They're always on time with compliance with the state, making sure that we're not, you know, falling out of compliance. They're always coming in. Right when I get ready, they should be coming in for the boiler, they're there. So that's what I like about this company, very reputable.
With the capacity for this, they're like, suddenly essentially if you attend this room, you need a feature that's, you know, safe.
I have, I have a game, I have a game room with one two-ton unit in it myself, and I put 100 people in that room and it keeps up. This is going to have two units in it. So I don't see a problem with cooling this room with the two units. The other advantage with the mini split is they're very quiet. Sometimes even like on the low side, you don't even think they're on. They're very, very quiet. So when you're back here, a lot of the residents, you can't hear what somebody's saying up here because of that window air. And that's not keeping up. So if we added another window air in here, if the windows could even support it, it would be too noisy, wouldn't be able to hear anything. So this is the best option, I think, for this one. And if it's multipurpose later down the road or made bigger, there's probably some place, a system that can take that, take that extra space on. that, take that extra space on.
There is a massive, because I had some done on my office. You know, I don't know, commercial costs most, more than, is there insurance, whatever it is. It is to me, the prices, the way I look at it, they're really hot.
There's, there's a lot, there's prices all over the map, obviously. I bought one that I ordered online for eight hundred dollars. It was eight hundred dollars. It didn't work. I ended up getting something else, so.
Well, not eight hundred dollars, not only cost between forty-six dollars, this was...
Yeah, here we got a lot of labor. Just working on a hundred-year-old building and getting the unit where it needs to go, you know, onto the roof, that's going to add some, it's going to add some money, especially in the line set, because the line sets are still copper and everything. You've got to make sure there's no leaks, and you've got to get the proper leaks. So, this is the trickiest one to do.
This is coming from General Fund, correct?
This would be from General Fund, right?
Yeah.
This is the General Fund. And what I'm trying to do in a long run, the whole vision is, is we had a couple of these over time, not all at one time. We have to do, we have to do a lot of this building, but we're not going to be able to sustain it all one year.
My, my last question is, do you get estimates from other companies?
Not on this particular bid that I got here. I did call some that I wanted to get bids from, and they would not even be able to service us this, this season on this. So I was very comfortable with the pricing, the pricing I sent compared to what, how I spend my money in my locations, for the same size unit, for the same tonnage, and for the same complexity of house and stuff. So, that's why I recommend going with somebody that we're already familiar with, somebody who's insurance, or comes in, they get in, they get out, and they do their job, and we're not screwing around with them, I know them. So, all right.
I don't think. So, what are you expecting in the next week?
A lot of projects.
I won't be here until.
Cancelled.
No, we'll be late.
Just cancel it.
All right, I mean, it seems like we have other, three other units for clerk office, for the, uh, city council office, for city manager office, except for the mayor's office. Because I don't ask anything for myself. That's fine.
I'm just answering her to that one, it was there, so.
Okay, that's, I mean, let's go ahead and.
We have two.
Actually, John, what, are those also AC units at the top that were, like, obviously, they don't, obviously, right?
I would. So you pointed them out?
I did, I just noticed them as well. I was like, I know the bottom one, we turned it on, but I'm like, okay.
That one broke, so I put one down.
I'll take one of the used ones, that's fine.
Councilman Alsmiri?
Uh, no.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Musa?
No.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three-one-thirteen, not approved.
So, let's, uh, maybe there's another option, cheaper one.
We will make you. I may get a meeting call with you.
All right. That gives us a check enough guarantee to search for other options.
Yes.
Next one is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, one fifteen, to approve, or fourteen, sorry, one fourteen, uh, to approve the purchase of mini-split cooling unit for first floor, uh, council office and administrative office.
I motion?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Motion.
That's, uh.
A smaller amount.
Nine, nine thousand five hundred.
It's going to be same kitchen, same thing.
All right.
Yeah, I guess move it to vote is better, same thing.
That's, uh, that's your office. You better not change your vote.
Same.
It's not the same. It's not the same. This is a huge, going through the ceiling, going up on the roof to put the, the, the ones down.
Well, the other one, they're going to be in the outside?
They're smaller unit, right?
They're going to be the outside, or they're going to be inside?
The condenser would be outside. The head of the unit is on the inside. Just pretty much like Conrad, it's, it's us.
So, all right, let's vote on this one.
Councilman Alsmiri?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three-one-fourteen approved.
All right. The next one is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three-one-fifteen, to approve the purchase of mini-split cooling unit for the city clerk office.
I make a motion?
Oh, thank you.
Please, please.
Ten thousand four hundred.
I'm sorry, I was not paying attention.
I make a motion.
Your motion, you seconded it, right, yeah.
All right.
Go ahead with the vote.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Alsmiri?
No.
Look at me, see? Councilman Musa?
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I got a new mini-split in my office. Resolution twenty twenty-three-one-fifteen approved, which I have to admit, I don't like the AC. I wish you would know. I don't like this. But my guys complained it's too hot in there, so thank you, I appreciate it.
So, so we only punish the residents here when they come in?
Yeah.
Well, we've explored motions to reconsider tonight.
Yeah. It gets hot when it's too many.
It's hot right now.
It is.
All right.
And as you can see, John is remaining up here because the next resolution is also this small.
We're going to have to get you a stool, John.
The next one is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three-one-sixteen, to approve the purchase of a Bearcat wood chipper for the Department of Public Services.
Motion?
Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I have John here to, uh, talk about this and hopefully make a good pitch.
You know, when I took this job, I had three goals. One was to provide the best service I could to the rest of us. And two was to modernize this department. Uh, this department, when I took this job and even working building, I was invisible. Nobody knew, we had it, you knew. Trucks weren't labeled, trucks all different colors, junky trucks running all around. Nobody knew who was pulling up in front of their house. And the other thing that I told myself I wanted to do was find ways to save money at the same time. Uh, so I looked at the two expenditures here, that were spending a lot of money on. And you might have, you might have the managers up there with you or not. But on just tree trimming, which out of default became a necessity with the street sweeper, because I can't get it down the streets without trimming the trees, um, trying to call out limb walkers, who we spent one hundred and fifty thousand dollars with last year, doing trimming trees. And I'm taking a very conservative approach. I believe we can do thirty-five percent of that in-house. And we have the manpower to do it. Uh, the only thing we need to do with it is get a chipper, because it makes it a lot easier. One of the council members was out when we happened to trim a lot of neighborhoods up last week. And the process of just cutting the branch down, throwing it on the ground, picking it up, putting it on a trailer, filling the trailer up, strapping the trailer down, driving it to the yard, unloading the trailer, putting it on the ground, to bring the trailer back to pick up more, just to pay somebody down the road to go pick that branch back up, you know, throw it in the dumpster, that you're going to overfill quickly, and it's costing six hundred bucks, and pay the labor to do it, when we could have just picked the branch off, off the street, and ran it through a chipper, and to a dump truck that we already currently own. Uh, twenty-six thousand dollar investment, saved about fifty-one thousand dollars conservatively, just on that one decision. That's not counting the thousand dollars extra. I timed it. I kept track of the hours, of what my hour, the guys spent, bringing the trailer back and forth, picking up these branches and bringing them to the yard, which are still sitting on Dan Street in the yard piled up, would be about a thousand dollars a day. I expect this unit to be out probably on average about two days a month, two to three days a month. So we'd be saving about three thousand dollars in man-hours per month, plus fifty-one thousand dollars for a twenty-six thousand dollar investment. So when I was looking at where I could save money in my department, I told you, many of you, I found ways to save money, and I'm going to bring it to the council. This was one of the ways that I'm going to save money. And also provide a service to the residents, I think, that we'd be greatly appreciative of. Uh, one, we'll have the woodchips. We can stack and pile for their use in their gardening, or compost, or whatever they want to do, uh, to help get rid of it, so we don't have to dispose of it.
This is going from the road?
This will be coming from the road, yes. And if, if you voted out, it don't matter. We're still going to be spending it, because I'm just going to call limb walkers up, and they're going to do it. It's just going to cost you a whole lot more money. That's the only difference. So, what I'm trying to do is cost you less money.
I think it'd be on the CDAC that they'll have.
My, my question is now. You know, the road budget, how much is it?
Millions.
Sorry?
What's our road fund?
About four million for the major roads, and about the same for the local roads.
And it's still the.
Sorry, sorry.
And it still comes out. So if we don't buy it, we're still paying somebody to take it out.
That's, that's the fund balance for the roads. The actual revenue that we get each year, the main roads, we get about one point seven, one point eight million per year, and about six to seven hundred thousand, uh, for local roads. So that's the revenue.
Almost one, two.
Two, two million.
What's, what's the end of balance that we have now?
Four million each. In the roads.
And how come there's not a lot of roads?
That's why we are.
Attractive.
Max, we are doing.
Lot of engineering, there's a lot of pre.
Max, we, we are doing two million dollars worth of road in this new budget year. So that's why I've increased the.
How many, how many are we doing now?
We have seven on the books right now.
And beside, beside this one that we talked about earlier?
Seven, seven.
We're not, we're going to try to do as many as we possibly can. But we can only ramp up so quickly. Um, we do have.
It's got, what, starting to leak?
Well, part of it was, you know, well, that, and, you know, I've been in the job not quite a year here. Um, we had a ton of turnover in City Hall. Um, you know, the contractors were working at a set pace for a really long time. Um, and frankly, we're starting to amp them up. We had hoped that they were going to be out earlier in the spring, but I don't think they believed us how much we had planned on amping this up. They got it now. Um, we're going to be doing all kinds of stuff here mid-August, and I'm hoping to continue that pace right through till the snow flies and pick up right in the spring. So, um, it's just a matter of getting us on a new, a new, uh, speed here, I guess.
We, we've made the money available for all this activity. That's why we're ramping up on the lead service lines. You know, we're ramping up on the road, and we're ramping up on the water and sewer projects. So since this is towards six thousand dollars, and we, we must get it over, just really down the road. Yeah, I think this is, this is one of those decisions which are a no-brainer. You're spending twenty-six thousand dollars to save fifty-one thousand, plus another three thousand per month on that. So it's a no-brainer, as far as this decision is concerned.
John, even though I, I requested for an editorial poll, it couldn't be yet. So I wish, I hope that we have an actual sheet.
We're, we're working. I finished that fifteen minutes before Max asked for it. Yeah, yeah. Or else I would have made it pretty for you.
Yeah, yeah. Councilman, uh, one of the things that our controller's doing is actually, we got that module, um, for all our assets in B S and A. That's exactly what we're doing.
Plus, plus we are, in order for our insurance renewal, this is the information that the insurance company has requested.
Yeah, what you got, which is a sign.
What you, what you, what you asked, I'd already asked John to prepare, you know, a little while ago. So we are already working on that.
So, so what's going to go on here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, well, we hope to be able to, every year, present for the list of everything in City Hall.
And if you go through it, you're going to see that really, for DPS department, we don't have a lot of stuff. That's why I've been in here a lot, trying to really.
You still get it, importing stuff for you.
Yeah.
Council, this is, this is new.
We're, we're like, we started from ground zero.
Up until like a year and a half ago, we had a couple DPW guys, you know? I mean, our, our DPS department was decimated. I mean, we weren't handling anything except for like, turn water on and off, you know? I mean, we're literally building you a DPS department in hopes of being able to respond to all the city's needs. You know, but it's going to take time. I mean, we've got to get the gear, we've got to get the people trained, we've got to get in the routines of things. I mean, this is not going to happen overnight. I mean, we're, we're building a department for you.
Right, that's why I don't ask a lot of questions on those. If you don't have the right equipments, you cannot work. You cannot be mechanic if you don't have the right tools.
We, we got a lot of young, energetic people coming in to that department. Um, they're very happy to even be here. Um, they're kicking butt out there. I mean.
And they're all still here? Ready to lose one, so it's a higher one. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that's fine.
Uh, Councilman Alsmiri?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three-one-sixteen approved.
Okay, next one is resolution twenty twenty-three-one-seventeen, to approve the purchase of a mini excavator.
Excavator.
Excavator for the Department of Public Services.
Mr. Mayor?
I motion?
Second. Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm here to defend this. Um, it's, um, again, a savings to the city, uh, exact same story, uh, with the exception of, John can elaborate on what the uses are on this better than I can, um, as to what exactly we, we want to deal with it, so.
Well, this, this unit here is kind of a matrix of what we can use it for. Um, and I'm actually proud of my department because it was actually their idea. We're spending on the, you know, the metal pipe that comes out of your lawn with the turn the water on and off, stop box, curb box, all of it. And those are on an angle, and we can't shut water off, or they're damaged in any way. So we have a contract with sewer and water fix them at a cost of thirteen hundred dollars a piece. Some of these are taking an hour to fix with, with the proper equipment. And we're, we're sending out thirteen hundred bucks every time we send somebody out. So I had a report done, and we're spending approximately a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, sending somebody out to fix a stop box, and we're probably not going to be collecting thirteen hundred dollars of water on. I'm looking at this, I'm like, this is, this is craziness. And my department, Brian came up to me and said, John, we can do these boxes. These are, it's not hard. I just need the right equipment to do it. So what do you need? He said, I need a mini excavator. I said, well, they're a hundred grand. That ain't going to happen. So, I called around, and I found a mini excavator with low hours, twenty-two hundred hours, a Kubota, I used one, for thirty-five thousand. It does need a trailer. Uh, and we can fix these curb boxes ourselves, and not have to send it, send it out to a contractor. Problem is sending out a contractor, we're going out there, shut off water, and I send this out to sewer and water, and they don't get to it for six weeks. These people are getting their water shut off. Now their water goes, is even worse, because they've been running water for six more weeks. We get into a point where they can't afford to turn it back on. That's just the one use of this machine. The other use is this ties in with the trees. There's a lot of trees on Goodson, five or six of them, I drove by them the other day. There are smaller trees that our department can handle, which we won't have to send out to a contractor to cut down. The one thing I'm going to have to do when I cut the tree down though is I have, I have to pull the stump out. This piece of equipment, we'll be able to pull the stump out, and we can restore that area ourselves, in-house, without using the contractor. So all I'm trying to do here again is avoid sending another job out to another outside contractor to save the city money. And then also have a piece of equipment that we can also grow with, possibly do, uh, water lines ourselves, use it for a wide range of things, taking outside, taking outside foundations, whatnot. This unit is small, maneuverable, it works on the streets, it's perfect. The one thing I did add, add that's new to this would be a twelve-inch bucket, so I'm not scooping out somebody's whole front lawn when I fix their curb box. And two was what they call a thumb attachment, which allows us to do trash cleaning and whatnot. So when we have site or clean up, this machine can actually go there, pick up trash, throw it in the dumpster, and we're not having guys trying to lift things up and throw it over the side of the dumpster. So this is going to be a multi-use machine that we can save money in many ways. I'm just letting you know about the one savings right off the bat. There's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year that we're sending out to sewer and water specialists.
We're trying to get away from contractors. Uh, contractors is not the ticket, you know? Uh, these emergency managers came in and decimated our, our departments, and, and basically, all these contractors raised their hands and said that, you know, we'll do this work for this amount, which looked very attractive at the time, but once our department's decimated and we don't have the equipment, now we're at the mercy of them, you know? So, I mean, So, I mean, they basically can bill us for whatever they want at some point, you know? I mean, of course, we paid it out, but, you know, we can do all this stuff in-house for a lot more, a lot cheaper, probably a lot more efficient and, you know, better quality service for our residents.
John, do, do we have one now?
We have a huge one right now. So, we can do like a big job, but I could not bring that to somebody's house and I would like dig their whole front lawn out with it. So, yeah, this is, this is designed to work in a tighter spot, doing a smaller repair, assign, you know, like take out assigned foundations or if we have to dig in, if our assigned foundation is too hard to dig through, this would be a perfect machine for that. Dig the hole, put sign in, backfill it, whatnot. This is a great machine. It, it has a lot of purposes. You can do small demos with it. Um, there's just, there's a lot you can do with it. Of course, the new one is, it's 100, 120,000, my new one. I'm not asking for that. Found a good one here. 2,000 hours is low hours. Generally, you get around 10,000 hours and you start questioning if you want to buy something or not. The fine one, this, from what they told me here, this was a farmer that had it and he used to use it for his fences, kind of structure. Turned it in and got a different.
Why did you wait until next year since the season is almost over this year and buy a new one?
Oh, this, this, no, this is going to be a used volume. We do, we have, we have curb box and stop box issues all winter long. So, especially in the winter, when the ground's frozen, guys aren't going to dig that. That's going to stay, those people are going to run their water bill up that we're supposed to shut off. They're going to run that all winter long. But that's what we can dig it.
So, it looks like you got it from the same company that you got the wood chipper?
Yep, they actually knocked the price down a little bit because we bought our Kubota snowplows from them. Uh, and, uh, they went through the whole unit. I told them I wanted a whole maintenance done on the unit before we picked it up. And, uh, they're looking at building a long-term relationship with the city. So, I told them I don't want some, some nightmare headaches. So, it's a number doing a full maintenance.
So, we are, it looks like we are giving them a lot of business for this company.
Yeah, they've been pretty good, they've been pretty good to us. And, uh, like I said, I added those attachments because I already know the purposes that I can use that for. It's going to save the city anymore. The numbers that I'm giving you are very conservative. I think, I, I told the mayor earlier, I'd like to look back a year from now after we put these things in use to see how close I was to my predictions with the council, to see if I was off or above. And I, I can guarantee you it's going to be better when I tell you.
Is that where we got the other, uh, equipment?
It's same thing I'm going to get the wood chipper from too, same, same place. Yes. And I'm trying to stay with Kubota. The beer cap, the name kind of fits, but it's Kubota engine. So, everything's Kubota.
I'm just surprised that you're using them because of the quality of the sound.
Yeah, well, when you look at a new one, you're like, oh, they're really, really hot.
And I don't treat them, open them as own, but they're the little ones. I'm surprised they cost that much.
Yeah.
All right. So, you're going to be able to, you spend 100, 100,000 dollars each year to fix something. It's a good bet.
Yeah, we're spending 120. I got two, two conflicting reports. I pulled it from two different sources. One was 100, one was 130. So, I'm saying about 120,000 is what paying water and sewer specialist to fix curb boxes.
You think you're dizzy because you're going to have a whole people to take care of the issue?
Yeah, no, our guys can do this, no problem.
So, is that where we got the sweepers from too?
No, sweepers came from Park Torschman and we get our second sweeper, I believe, in like two days.
So, Mr. Chair, so you said that we have a bigger one. So, which does not go through the alley? This is why we're trying to have a mini one? I used excavator before, uh, myself. I rented it out from the Home Depot, from my, uh, building a house, trenching, you know, the ground.
Yeah, the...
So, it's the size of the one that...
The one we got is too big for the front yard, yeah. Because we're doing work in the front yard and pulling out trees. We're going to do more damage with that big machine out than, than this one. This one has got the tracks. So, either if we're driving over lawns, it's going to do less, less, you know, less damage than that over here.
Councilman El Samiri.
Hello.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Hi, yes.
Councilman Chaudry.
Hi, my name is... This is Rafai, no, this is...
I just always mix them up.
It's okay, yes. I, I...
Do you want me to pick Rafai next?
No, you don't.
Councilman Melissa.
Yes.
Councilman Rafai.
No.
No. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-117 approved.
Uh, the next one is, um, Resolution 2023-118 to approve the purchase of, uh, 20 safety windows for various city departments.
Want you?
Next decision. Mr. Mayor, uh, so, the last meeting, we had one big resolution with all of this stuff in it and I think it was very confusing to everybody. Um, and we thought that maybe if we brought it back and, and explained it a little bit differently, rewrote it a little bit differently for you, um, and, and broke it down a bit, it would potentially pass or at least be considered a little bit more carefully. Um, this is the windows on the first floor for all the plexiglass. Um, it's, it's very cheap junk plexiglass we have there now. Um, we got it from Home Depot, we screwed it in. It does not look good. It does not look professional. Um, it was only meant to be very temporary. Um, our hope is to make it look professional.
And on a side note, talking to the employees, they feel unsafe with what's there. They, they've asked to have something similar to the treasurer's office. Now, it's not as...
Well, we, all this year, nothing happened. So, they can't feel unsecure. That's not really the deal.
We want to look to see nice, that's, that's completely different. The employee feel unsecure, that's wrong.
Actually, if I may, Councilman...
People have been working here for many years, nobody, nothing happened.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, we have. Yeah, we have.
Not, not recently, but...
Police department not...
No.
Uh, well, someone jumped actually through the clerk's window and insulted the former clerk. So, yeah, it, it actually did happen. Now, granted, I'm at the front door now, so... So, but...
I mean, I never know, but it's to make it more professional, more professional looks, that would make sense.
For, for as many windows as still on it.
That's of course, that I hope for it. That's why I'm saying... Yes, yes, I'm going to get pushed back maybe because only reason I want to see the city look nicer, I want it to look professional. When you go to the city, you go to Warren, their city almost, you know, compared to any, but go to Santa Lys, a small city, but their city looks spectacular, it's clean, nice, you know?
We here 100% are trying to clean up the look and the feel here for our residents. When they visit City Hall, we, we want it to look professional. We want them, we want our residents to be able to be proud of their City Hall.
We don't want to be a second-class city that we're trying to, that we're trying to force it, we don't want that. That's why I'm saying, yes, 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 we want it.
So, this will include the clerk's office, right?
This includes quite a bit. It clerk's office, it includes the DPS, it includes the building department, which is a huge windows set upstairs.
So, so this costs 7,300. So, what's the next one, same thing for the city building, city hall building?
No, that's, that's all the exterior windows in the building.
Because that's up to 750, that's a huge amount.
Well, that's, the one we're voting on now is just for the plexiglass at our, our indoor windows, inside windows, only plexiglass.
This is done with the...
Are they going to have some here too or no?
We did have them separating the council.
And this isn't done in, uh, the same glass as the treasurer's, a little thinner. So, it's not... If I did it with the same material as the treasurer, this bid would have been over 35,000 dollars to do these offices. This is done with, uh, 1-inch plexiglass. So, it looks like bulletproof. It's not bulletproof, but it's definitely going to stop and slow down any decent attempt to try to hurt one of the employees or get through a window.
The public, did you say the word?
1-inch.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, safety because...
Are they going to have little...
A little scare.
Beaker things?
That's the 6,400 is the glass. The, it's, they brought it up to 7,300 to drill the 4-inch holes so they can carry each other and, you know?
Because 1-inch is, uh, very heavy.
Yeah.
Nobody's scared, you know?
It's already when Councilman, when Councilman El Samiri comes to my window, he already does like this to talk underneath the...
So, I actually should be able to hear people because right now it's kind of difficult because there's no circles.
Yeah.
A little 6,900. So, this one is just for the, for the front window?
The windows, you come to speak to them.
For all the service windows, Mayor. I actually thought that was pretty inexpensive for, for what we're getting.
How about all the corner and the side and the chair? We're going to be changing?
Counters and what?
All the table and chair for all of them.
Councilman Samiri saying, well, you're going to be building one, you want it in the sun or not? You're going to need it in your office? And then the entire city will have this.
No, I'm good. I, uh... Well, I, I was just, uh, looking at the perspective from the residents walking in and we put the plexiglasses and we were, you know, putting barricades, like putting too many protections and then they feel like you guys are on this side or we're on this side. And then I would feel like they're welcome, you know? You know, putting enough windows and... Now it's open. I feel like, you know, they can talk to the employees one-on-one, close to each other and then some of them are, you know, as you know, it's a language barrier to...
Should be able to hear people better with this setup because there is no holes currently in what we have. So, we're constantly asking people to repeat themselves. With this, we're actually going to have holes drilled in forward people speak. So, we can actually be able to hear people.
But it's open now, right?
No, we all have plexiglass.
Little...
Oh, we're replacing the, like... So, I mean, it's, it's not that expensive, is it? Is it that necessary? Is it like that urgent?
It's not going to, City Hall's not going to fall, but I mean, we're, we're just trying to make it look better and professional.
We just tried to work the police, but guys, can we get them out of this? We have, we have left the police department next to it, right? This, I mean, I don't think you should be worried.
Yeah, but there was nothing they could have done to stop the person that jumped over the clerk's window. So, I mean, it happened, it happened literally so fast.
I mean, our new clerk, nobody complains about it. So, unless you are scared of...
Well, maybe one person complains about it. No, I'm pretty good with customers.
If individually do something, I consider prior to this, 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 yeah. So, it is, um, not too bad location, um, but it's really good for the...
I can promise you, I won't get into any personal fights.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, uh, next to the police department, I would worry my finger and I'd still not worry. Even though I tend to be still this... So, I, it's up to the city.
Are we ready to vote on this?
Yes, we are.
Councilman Musa.
No.
Councilman Rafai.
No.
Councilman Chaudry.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
No.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-118 not approved.
How? Next one and the last one.
Nope.
One more.
Oh, yeah, we have another.
Really?
Another one, too. So, Resolution 2023-118 to approve the purchase of windows for the City Hall building.
I'm in March 2nd.
Mr. Mayor, this, this is basically a blanket purchase for windows for City Hall. We, we estimate that if we were to replace every window in City Hall now, it would be between 5, 750,000 dollars. But, I mean, frankly, no window, uh, no window supplier wants to come here and take the time to measure every, every window in City Hall for something that we're not going to do right now. So, we, we have a best guess based on there. Um, our intent is to replace the windows as truly needed, you know? The windows that aren't blocking, the windows that aren't closing, the windows that, um, basically let more wind in, prevent close than the not. Um, and, and hopefully to do it on a regular basis as the DPS budget allows for it. Um, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to just do, you know, 100,000 worth of windows right now, but, you know, we may do a couple 10,000 worth to replace the bad ones. Um, and then as, as necessary, we will hopefully continue to replace them out and eventually over the next few years and the next few budgets, maybe we do them all.
I don't do the estimate, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, there's an estimate between 500,000 to 700,000.
It's dependent if we do a lot of the circle tops that are transoms. That's why there's a variance in there. I'm trying to find ways to save in the circle tops that we have because the window's below. And what I'm trying to do, because this, I, I looked at this being a, a multi-year project. This is going to be something over many, many years. So, I was trying to go with a commercial window that not just one contractor has particular to themselves, but a universal style aluminum commercial window that should, if we bring on a different contractor at a later date to continue with the project, we can match. So, we're not having a bunch of mismatched windows. I, other than doing the clerk's office, I don't plan on doing any windows. It's just, it's just as a blanket. The city manager said, just so we can move forward. I was told to bring this back by a councilor, bring it back as a blanket so that I'm not here 70 times trying to get an approval for windows as a couple, as we get a few bucks here and there to do some of this. Some of these could possibly fall into a grant as we're moving forward. I don't know.
So, so that's a one-time new project?
Oh, by far, yes.
So, we can train our people on this one.
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, personally, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen. We may decide to do all of them in one year or wait, they take five, six years. So, we don't know what's going to happen after approving this. I, I'd rather approve each department, discuss a, you know, 40,000, 15,000 and get a chance to talk about the urgency and, you know, if it's really needed or not, rather than decisions we take without a story what's going on. I mean, not that, I'm sure you would fix, you know, as, as needed, but, um, I, it's better for the city council to be notified about what's going to happen and how much each project costs and how much each apartment costs. That, that's what I think personally. Uh, I know it's too much work for you to be here at the time, you need something, but, um, and for us too, but I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, uh, just quickly, it's going to make, bring amendment to this language that will approve maybe, that is still a very good discussion. Even if we approve, when you're doing it department by department, still mention to the council that's what department we are doing. So, make sure council know why that's what we've done.
We, we can certainly notify Mayor and Council anytime.
I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Chair, I think if you can help them still, Councilman Samiri divide his building, thread his building, the whole job world. You know, it's crazy seeing this being a model for, for windows. I, you know, expecting windows should not cost that much. How much windows are we, are we...
100.
100 windows.
Well, I, I recap, Mr. Mayor, if we're able to work slowly, these weeks, now we're talking about it. The door and the drop setting is staying.
So, if we could work slowly with each department by itself, at least that'd be easier of, of the total amount of, uh, you know, of the budget. I think hitting us with this amount of windows, it's a huge amount.
Fair, fair.
Well, we put some, like, we applied for some, uh, projects with the congressman and some senators. Did, did we get any response about that? One of them was the City Hall building.
They excluded government buildings.
Yeah, that one got voted in.
So, we even talking about the state or the federal?
The last one, the last one, yeah, they, they won't let us. The year before, they allowed it, then they killed that option. For anything to do with city, that was coming from the state.
Because we, we talked to Congressman Sri, so that's from federal.
Yeah, we're, at least the one, I don't know if it was Sri or the, the other one we applied for, um, they, they indicated that that wasn't going to be happening, at least for the upgrades in City Hall. So, there's other things still pending that we're waiting to hear back from, but I don't think that one's coming through. Um, but it, uh, may I ask humbly if council decides not to do this as a blanket, could we amend this to potentially, right now, do at least the clerk's office and possibly the as-needed ones in the courts?
Yeah, the courts will come out of the court building fund.
That's what I was going to ask you, John. There, we, some of this money is coming from the court funding too.
Correct. Yeah, and I have a separate bit, a separate bit that I had here last time. Um, we don't need frames in the third floor. The frames are there. It's just a blazing unit. So, those are basically a repair and maintenance item, you know, some of them are cracked. Some of you can stick your hand right outside. The, the windows have shifted that much. It's just open.
But there's, there's a few that we have security concerns.
And then...
It's all building, we need to be maintained.
So, you're asking to make an amendment to this. If, if the...
The council wants to...
That's the best, um, option, to do an amendment and do the ones that we needed to do now.
Yeah, the, the clerk's is important because of the air conditioning.
Sure. But I think it's not fresh to make an amendment or what?
So, can we, can we know which department that is? So, clerk is one of the level.
The true clerk. So, you're asking for now?
First thing, you just the clerk's office.
Right now, the top of my list is the clerk's office, uh, for myriad reasons that I don't really want to get into in the council meeting.
Sure.
Um, but, uh, the other one, I requested the court because I know that there's some seriously bad windows in the court. The judge was requesting it. I, I can't speak to the court other than what I was told because I don't go into the court. But my top priority right now is the clerks. Um, but as we identify other ones, we can bring them back.
Why you think it in the only, it's going to be only the clerk's office? Yes, clerk's office. You speak for the whole place and we say they have clerk's office, they need to change.
However...
Why do you make it separate?
Mr. Chair, can I amend this to just to be the clerk's?
That's always...
And then the, uh, the court could do, because the court's gonna pay for it.
It's mentioned.
And all of the, yeah, just clerk's too.
Court paying for their own money.
And all amend that, only the clerk's office and the court's.
And, and the court of second.
Okay, and then we, we had it before and we rejected it, so there was an estimate for before, right? Yes.
Yeah, I think there was.
Yes, well, there was an estimate for the court, but...
For the clerk.
For the clerk and the, the clerk and all offices. Without why? Yes, clerk's office.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
And this, there was some unit pricing, because a lot of these windows are the same. So that's how I gathered the bids, is when I called the different contractors, come out and give them the unit size. Found out, all commercial windows are based off of square inches, so I was able to get the best contractor based off that price. I got three written bids for the windows she was building.
Yeah, let's try to do the clerk's office, so no one can come in and bother run out of the window.
Thanks.
Do we have to have small windows that we can make some, like, big windows that looks outside? It's better view for the...
The windows that I have in mind are, are fixed panel on the top, three-quarters, and a hopper, what they call a hopper window on the bottom. So it hops out, so if it's raining and the window's left open, you're not getting rain inside the building.
So no bay windows?
For walkout days.
And no runner, we're not getting the electric lights.
This is the all window for outside.
The outside windows, these are for the outside windows, yes.
She doesn't want you to pick, Councilman.
Okay, so we are voting on the amendment to only do clerks and courts windows. Um, Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the motion to only allow clerk and court windows to be, uh...
Replaced.
Replaced, thank you.
Okay, so that's the amendment. Now we vote on the amended...
Resolution. May I motion to amend the, to vote on the amended resolution?
My motion, second.
Color roll?
Just one moment, I mean, there's a lot of people here in this meeting, so...
Don't pull up more.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was more, it was...
Now motion's Rafai, and second, Rafi is just...
Okay, Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, amended Resolution 1, 2023-118 approved.
Thank you.
I think I've done.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And the last one is the...
John Roll?
Resolution 2023-120, approving MOU between, uh, the Michigan Department of Treasury and the City of Hamtramck.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, um, so the Michigan Department of Treasury often supports our endeavors here in the City of Hamtramck, um, and in an attempt to help us out whenever they can. Uh, this one specifically, I made a request to extend our grant writing services, um, and they agreed. Um, they only gave us, what was the last amount they gave us, Mayor? Couple tens of thousand, like 20,000?
Yeah.
Uh, and I asked for twice that this time, and they, they obliged us. So, uh, it's free money to help us write more grants.
And if you can free money?
Take it.
Windows.
Well, this will offset the windows a little.
On the accelerator.
You didn't shut out, I don't know the order of terms that month.
I'm not done asking.
That's more, we can ask you.
Councilman...
All right, shut up.
Ready? Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-120 approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're done with the new business, and now we move to the reports. It's getting too late, I'm not gonna say much. I just wanna take this opportunity and, uh, thank you all for staying with us and for coming to this meeting. And, uh, everything that's been discussed here, we'll try to address that and take actions, you know, regarding public comments and other stuff. Um, I want to take this opportunity also to congratulate again Hamtramck FC on their victory and bringing back, uh, home the trophy and the championship from Tennessee. I was invited to go to that, uh, tournament, but I couldn't make it. But I was watching the games, by the way, especially the final. And, uh, I will make sure to be tomorrow at their event at 6 o'clock, and everybody's invited. Uh, we'll start in the big park in front of the big Harameen, the new Harameen. And, uh, we asked for some, uh, you know, accommodations and some help from the police department to accompany the parade. And I also talked to the organizers to educate the people to drive slowly, not to cause any trouble, um, and to be, uh, to follow the rules, basically. And hopefully it's gonna be a peaceful parade to celebrate their victory, and then there will be dinner, uh, at Azal Hall, is it? Azal Hall at 7 o'clock, everyone is invited. Um, that's, that's basically all. I don't remember what I did in the past two weeks, too many events. Usually in this report, we are supposed to address people and say what we, what did we do over the past two weeks? I did so much that I can't remember, so, um, that's it. Mayor Proten, I'm sorry?
It's been a long night.
Yeah, I know. Um, Mayor Proten is not here, so no report for him. City Council, any one of you, uh, can go ahead, and you have anything to say, Mr.?
Uh, I just wanna say quick, Mr. Mayor, the thing is, is you may have to bring some, uh, like, announce some, uh, communicate, act, offer a song, I'm too long night, I'm losing my work. Not the activities, like, there are all those actions coming up.
Tracture.
What's getting done, because that's what community looking for. They always think that they're paying taxes, they're not getting enough, anything, and people are looking at their timing, the summer is only getting over and nothing getting done. So, please push all those things that I mentioned, make sure people see that things, you know, we are working on. And I hope you'll come up with some good ideas and, uh, and announcement next minute as well. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr.?
Yeah.
You wanna say something?
Yes. Thank you for the, uh, people who made the victory, and I hope I can join the parade tomorrow. Two things I'd like to bring the front. Residents coming from 271 and Poland Street. Uh, everybody like to know, single family house, paying for $6,900 taxes. Unbelievable, it is, I can't afford it either. So please, the people who made the subcommittee start working with those things, those issue. Another things, I have another friend of mine, lives in, uh, 1174 Fort Subaske. He's remodeling his second floor. Uh, a lot of violence should come out there, Max is helping him also a little bit. But now, one by one, they're telling him to fix this, uh, sorry, uh, street, front of the street, also in this part, he has to sidewalk, he has to fix those things. Those people want to sell their house and leave from the city. It look like we are pressuring them to move from there. I, I suggest to, and he bring, before the meeting, he tried to speak to those councils, uh, he meet Max, I said, so leave some document to Max, let me see what we can do. I'm, I'm urging the people who are working for us and the community inside the City Hall, don't harass the people, try to work with them. And especially everybody, everywhere the tax is skyrocketing, and I'm, I'm shocked. I'm paying high taxes, but the tax of single family paying for this is unbelievable. People lives in Sterling and other places, Troy, you pay $6,500 big house, and the small house, not even 1,100 square feet, paying for $6,900, $6,908.70. Please, we have to do something there, and we are in Wayne County, Rose Point in Wayne County. This is a time to talk to the people in Wayne County, meet their, uh, accessory department and talk to them, how your taxes are a little bit lower than our Hamtramck. Should we go that much far, or our department gonna do something for us? Do something for our community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, City Manager, do you have anything to say?
Uh, I've said enough, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, then we move back to the public comments.
Thank you. Uh, the Louis Rabels, no, over here, okay. Lazi?
Hi, Mayor and Council, I'm also tired, so I just have a couple notes. Um, regarding Resolution 2023-104, the discussion about the sending out of consent forms, I do have a concern that if we're collecting consent forms a considerable amount of time before we're actually replacing with service lines, that by the time the service line replacements happen, forgetting consent forms from the whole city at once, the homes might have changed hands, people forget, they don't understand, like, you know, if it's two years later and then someone comes and tears up their yard. Um, I just have a, a concern about that, the timeline between collecting consent forms and the actual work that's gonna be done related to the consent forms.
Mr. Mayor, right? Uh, just to clarify, I don't think I've said much, but we actually require, like, their phone numbers and to talk to those people before we actually get to their house anyway. So, even if they're stale and we can't get through, then we'll have to do it again. But if we have bulk of them in a good number, we're good to go.
Do we have people that speak the language to make sure they understand what's happening?
To the best of our abilities, yes. I mean, we, we, we have internal people, uh, some of our, um, our interns are going out that are bilingual as well. Uh, and then, of course, within City Hall, we have a ton of people that speak various languages as well, so...
Um, and then I also just have a concern about the, um, selection process for the proclamations that are read. Um, there was no 4th of July proclamation read this year, um, and other proclamations that aren't... It's just, there's a discrepancy between what is actually put on the agenda and, um, things that have traditionally gone on the agendas in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Meyer? Closing out the show.
All right, um, sorry about the sound system. Uh, I offered to help fix it, and I haven't come over here and do it. Greg and I are gonna try to find another way, because some people come up here to speak, you can't hear back here at all.
That's what happens.
Yeah, I'll find a solution. Uh, meantime, I think that our city manager just violated the council rule. You're not supposed to talk back and forth with the governor. Supposed to wait till we're done today, so I just passed out, but I noticed it hits a rule. That's how silly the rules are, folks. I mean, we really don't need to just talk when it's most important. But I support what you did. Uh, but there's rules that say you can only talk after the council member's spoken, and then you have up to two minutes, I think, or something. So you're gonna follow the rules, or you're gonna change the rules, or it doesn't matter? Yeah. Um, so remember when we had no glass protection at all anywhere in these, uh, grocery stores and gas stations and stuff, when the guy was just there and you gave him the money and whatever with that? And life has changed. Maybe you aren't old enough. Do you remember that? When there was no glass at all? When people just go up to banks, you didn't have glass in the banks? You just walk up to the teller, and there they were, you know, no glass. Life has changed in New York's circuit. Uh, I'd like to commend our council member, who has made up for his months that he was away from here in one evening tonight. I think you, you obviously have a lot to say, and you studied up on it, and I'm really impressed with what you did. I hope you all learned from that, because, uh, he's definitely involved in these issues, I appreciate that. You asked the right questions. Um, so I think we have to oppose gentrification, is what I was saying earlier. Because if you understand economics, you'll know why the taxes are up. You have to, I'm not an economics major or nothing, but you could study this and find out why we're paying higher taxes. Can I ask for another minute?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, here's one way to oppose gentrification. You create alliances among residents, businesses, and activists. You pass rent control laws. You create affordable housing, you could create community land trusts. You set up policies that either reduce or freeze property taxes, protect long-time residents here. You could do that, you have the power to do that. Have you looked into how to stop gentrification? Please, look into that, you can do that. 30 seconds. The other thing is oppose privatization. That's what happened years ago with our financial managers came here, sold all our public property and privatized everything, you know, the city always loses when you privatize. So I'm so glad that we're getting back to finding the right way to move things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, the thoughts of what we had?
Okay, thank you, and, uh, we have a closed session. And then we will be back to...
I need a motion?
My motion, turn the meeting second.
No. 10:30, are we taking a five-minute break?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.